Thank you, Lord. God Almighty be with us again tonight as we always trust you to guide us and show us the wisdom of our ways so we can make Bonita even better place to live. Amen. Destiny, would you lead us in a fudge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Present.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see if we could move up item 12, the redistricting item up to item nine.
I'd rather not.
Well, I make a motion that we move it to item nine.
So before, after the consent agenda?
After the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any comment? My comment is we don't need to change things around at the last minute.
It's our agenda, Mayor. We can change anything we want. I'm making a motion.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay, public comment on anything that's on the agenda?
This would be the exclusion-
Yes, ma'am. Hi, how you doing?
This would be the exclusion of three items, the two zoning hearings and the item with respect to the redistricting. That will have a separate public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Giambbo. I live on Bel Rio Drive off of West Terry, and my comments are in relation to agenda item nine, consent agenda subitem C, which refers to the 14 solar-powered flash beam pedestrian signals to be installed at seven crosswalks on West Terry. I have also read the green sheet, so I know what is to be presented to you tonight by city staff. First, I would like to urge you to approve this agenda item. Second, though, I would like to urge you to go beyond what you are being presented with in this agenda item. At the March 2 meeting, you instructed city staff to present you with information they'll present tonight, as well as information on the cost and timeline for table crosswalks that would require slowing. However, this is not included, the second part is not included in the green sheet information that you have to discuss tonight. So my question is, when will it be included as an additional agenda item? And I urge you to please not let this issue die. Please move it forward. I'd like to remind you of the statistic my husband, who was here with a walker and his leg in a cast last time, that he shared with you at the March 16 meeting, that in 2021, last year, there were 142 deaths in Orlando of pedestrians in crosswalks, and many of them were with crosswalks that had the same kinds of flashing lights that you are going to discuss this evening. Although I know that from your discussion on March 2, this is the next step, hopefully leading to the final step of tabled crosswalks, which is what you proposed to city staff to provide you information for at that point. Following the March 16 meeting, I met Charles Reed outside as we were leaving with Patel Green and Associates Engineering. That firm applies for federal funds for municipalities when there are unsafe conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists. They apply for those federal funds, they plan the projects, and they do the construction. After not receiving a response, I sent an email to all city council members, the assistant city manager and the city manager on March 25th to connect you with Charles Green as well. So I would beg you to please continue moving forward on this issue. You are the only ones who can bring this change for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, not just on West Terry, but throughout the rest of the city. And this includes children trying to go to and from school. So I look forward to the second part of what you instructed city staff to do on March 2, which involves the timeline and the cost for the table crosswalks. And I urge you to consider connecting with Charles Reed with Patel Green and Associates to determine whether the free federal money and the free installation costing the city nothing for table crosswalks would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Great. Number 8A, Royal Scoop.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the next two items are quasi-judicial in nature, so what I would like to do is I would like to swear in any testimony. So if you're here for either of the next two items, both are public hearings on zoning matters, whether you came just to watch and you, or you're came specifically for the applicant, I would ask that if you think even deep inside your heart that you may want to have an opportunity to speak today, it'll just make it go a lot smoother if we could swear you in now. Please rise, raise your right hand, and you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you very much.
Okay, who's going to present this? Royal Scoop?
I don't think it's this one.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, or good afternoon, sorry. Good evening. I'll get it right one of these times.
Good day, yeah.
It has been a long day.
Mike Fegan for the record. We'll let the applicant go first, but I'll just give a, I'll just give a brief little overview here of what we're doing here. This is a special exception request for a manufacturing use within an industrial zoning district. It's going to take place completely within an enclosed building. They are proposing some building modifications to help make the building work for what they needed to do. It's going to be for ice cream manufacturing, and the code stipulates a special exception for this specific type of use. The case was heard in front of zoning board last month. They voted unanimously to approve it with staff's conditions, and staff and the applicant are in agreement on the conditions. So with that, I can turn it over to the applicant, or if you just have any questions. Yes, sir?
What is, what are some of the conditions?
So the conditions are, for example, that this is going to be valid for this specific applicant only. So if another applicant wants to come in for the same use, they have to come back through the process. It's just specific to this applicant. It's also putting them on notice that approving this special exception does not guarantee that they won't get building permits or development permits. It does not circumvent that process for them. They still need to go through that process. It also makes clear that they still need to abide by the noise control ordinance, that even though they are an industrial area, which is traditionally a little bit more noisy and snowy than other areas, it doesn't absolve them of any of the other code requirements. So it's purely just to approve this manufacturing use within this enclosed building.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
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 All right.
Public comment on this?
Public comment, you got it.
A public comment on the Royal Scoop?
Roll call.
Seeing none, any other comments? Roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Can I just, can I just make a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very, I'm very pleased that we have passed this, particularly because we don't have that many manufacturing structures within Bonita Springs. And when I first came to Florida, one of the first things I did was go to Royal Scoop. So I'm just delighted that we have this in Bonita Springs, this manufacturing unit come in here. So I was very pleased to vote in favor of this, and I hope the rest of the community feels the same way.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. Okay, city attorney?
All right, your next, your next item is a request for an administrative appeal regarding sidewalks and the fee-in- lieu provisions of our code. I talked briefly with Mr. Davies, who's the attorney for the applicant, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, so I'm going to ask him to come up first, give, give his case, what he, why he would like relief, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Gibbons from staff to come up and explain the, basically what the code provisions state, and then we'll take it from there.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. For the record, my name is Noel Davies with the law firm of Davies Duke. Our firm represents the developer builder of the Entrada project. It's a company called 2797 Old 41 Road LLC, the principles of which are James Deagle and Stephen Hovland. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site and the building. It's a beautiful white building known as Entrada, located at the northeastern corner of Bonita Beach Road and Old 41. My applicant, my client's application, excuse me, for this item is an appeal of administrative action, and that is pursuant to section 4-53 subsection C of your land development code. The subject administrative action is a letter authored by Mr. Stuart Smith dated January 21st, 2022, a copy of which is in your backup this evening. The letter relates to certain sidewalk and bike path improvements, immediately abutting the subject property in the Old 41 right-of-way. As a preliminary matter, the letter cites to the incorrect provisions within your ordinances. Specifically, it references a resolution 06155, which doesn't exist. It also cites to section 3-263 of your land development code, which does exist, but the language therein does not state what the city claims it states. In my client's submittal for its development order for the subject property, the pertinent plans included a 12-foot wide sidewalk and bike path, again, immediately west of the subject property, running north-south in the Old 41 right-of-way. For a number of reasons, following the approval of the subject development order, my client decided to remove that 12-foot sidewalk and bike path and allow the existing six-foot wide brick path to remain. At the city staff's direction, my client then applied for a waiver to that purported requirement, which waiver was granted by the city as set forth in the January 21 letter. However, that letter included an improper condition, specifically the requirement for my client to issue a fee-in- lieu payment in the amount of $48,277.40 as a condition to the issuance of any temporary certificate of completion for Entrada. My client paid that amount. He did so under protest, and then my office subsequently filed this appeal. The city's actions in this matter were improper. They were unlawful, and my client is here this evening respectfully seeking reimbursement of the $48,277.40. Section 3-263 of your land development code requires that new developments comply with your bicycle and pedestrian master plan adopted in February 2017. As you're all aware, that plan is a 44-page document. It includes specific maps and plans within it depicting roadways within your city with specific requirements for sidewalks and paths. I do have this copy here, and I would like to enter a copy into the record for these proceedings. Thank you, Mr. Rooney. If you'll turn to section 4.1 of the master plan, which is entitled "The Long Range Plan", it does not specifically require what is set forth in Mr. Smith's letter. It simply references sidewalk without more. That sidewalk already exists today, as I mentioned. Then section 4.4 of the master plan, which is entitled "The Sidewalk Plan," states that there are three options for sidewalks. One, existing sidewalks to remain. Two, existing sidewalks to be replaced. And three, proposed new sidewalks. In the section of Old 41, abutting the property, it states existing sidewalk to remain. Then if you go to section 4.3 of the master plan, which is entitled "Multi-Use Trail Plan," no such multi-use trail is required for the section of Old 41 abutting the property. There was and is no requirement to install this 12-foot wide sidewalk and bike path adjacent to the property, and therefore, there is no requirement for my client to have paid the $48,277.40. Accordingly, my client respectfully requests this evening that the city reimburse my client in the amount of the $48,277.40. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I will remain here for your questions.
Oh, he paid that money?
Yes, sir, he did so under protest.
Mr. Noel, I just want to see if I can clarify the position. So the, the real, the crux of the issue is that the sidewalk, the adopted sidewalk master plan, which is referenced in the approval letters, indicates nothing more than a sidewalk, and then later on, that plan indicates that the sidewalk that is existing and present adjacent to the Entrada project is to remain, and that no new sidewalk on multi-use plan, multi-use trail is to replace it, but that is a condition of the permit.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Rooney, there's, so the pertinent code provisions direct the analysis to the master plan. There's a number of different code provisions that reference it, and the plan, or the code says effectively comply with the plan, comply with the master plan. The master plan has a series of diagrams, a series of roadway segments within the city, little snapshots, if you will, and then there's a key or a legend with options or with, I suppose, differing requirements, depending on where you are in the city, what road, the subject development abuts, et cetera. And if you look closely at those pertinent sub-maps, so to speak, within the master plan, there is no requirement for construction of the 12-foot bike and pedestrian sidewalk. And I don't know why the planner that was hired to do the plan, or the company that was hired to do the plan, did it that way. Perhaps it's because there's already quite a nice six-foot wide, oh, it's not 12 feet, but six-foot wide brick paved meandering path on that portion of the eastern side of the Old 41 right-of-way between my client's property, or abutting my client's property on the west side. And so my position is that when you're, when you, when you, when you look closely at the code provisions, which direct you to the master plan, and then when you unpack that master plan, which is a complex 44-page document, and you try to find the specific section of the city that my client's property is located in, or the right-of-way that abuts it, there's no requirement to build this 12-foot wide sidewalk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This could go on all night, because I can find so many passages in the contract that completely counter what you're saying, but I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to say, but no, actually, it says that your client said there's five inch there, and I agree up a 12-inch and, and yada, on and on and on. So isn't this something that should be taken? Because otherwise, this is going to go on for a very long evening.
My, my recommendation, it was not clear in the application, and I will admit that the application process itself asked for the request, but did not ask for all the detail that Mr. Davies presented today. What he has provided to me is several overlays in the multi-use plan, which I'll provide to staff if, if Mr. Gibbons want to take a look at what we're talking about.
Yeah, for the record, Mr. Rooney, I think some of, there's some of my notes on there.
Okay.
So, but for your benefit.
Draw the little animal there with the-
No, that wasn't me, but there might be some penmanship on there. I would like to enter into the record a copy of your master plan, just so, for the record to reflect that.
Indicating that there is no multi-use trail, which is what is in the plans, as I understand, along the Old 41 corridor, and on the existing sidewalk plan, it indicates by the reference key that the existing sidewalk, which is present, is to remain. So at this time, unless the, unless the applicant would like his client to come up and ask anymore, what I would ask is for staff to see if they could rebut those conditions to see if they fall from other parts of the code or from the plan.
Put you guys like together.
And then, questions?
Yeah.
Well, this has been going, there's been, this has been going on back and forth for some time.
Oh, I know.
So I would, since this is a hearing before you, I would let staff give their rebuttal and then see if there's any additional questions.
And if I may, Councilmember Carr, for the record, we have been, or my client and its representatives, other non-legal representatives have tried to work closely with your staff about this issue and many others relating to entities owned by Mr. Hovland and Mr. Deagle. We are glad to be in front of you this evening because we think it's important that council, city council and, and, and the mayor are aware that we have endeavored in good faith to do that, that those conversations, those efforts have effectively been futile. And respectfully to the city, to city staff, city attorney-
Well, respectfully back to disagree. Your client received highlighted directions on what was needed. We, I think city development, community development has gone out of their way to try to help move this project to closure.
Understood. We're here because we respectfully disagree with that. There's a lawsuit, a litigation process. It's requirement that, for this matter, it be heard by you first. So if you respectfully disagree and want to deny the application for appeal, that's in your discretion. I won't speak for your city attorney about that, but if it's an impasse, then the next steps course.
Could I make, could I make a motion not to deny, but to, but-
Let's finish the hearing process.
I want the city attorney to handle this, please.
My recommendation is this, this is a quasi-hearing. You're here from both sides and determine what you feel is appropriate and given the request for relief that's made. You haven't heard from your staff yet. The staff report that's presented is assuming a different request than what has been provided here tonight.
Right. So do they have time to prepare?
So let's, but let's, let's let the staff respond. If they can respond tonight, then they can respond tonight. So I would ask them to respond.
Let them go through their routine.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Counsel, pleasure to see all of you again. Sean Gibbons, Community Development, for the record. As we'd mentioned kind of previously through Derek, staff had prepared a slightly different staff report, assuming a different request was being made, that it was the specific line items in the fee, not the fee itself, or the application of the fee that was being appealed. That being said, different portions of the Bike Ped Code 2-3-263 and further down the admin code and Rule 78 of said admin code kind of dictate the city's policies towards bicycle pedestrian improvements throughout the city, on roadways identified in the Bike Ped Plan, and roadways adjacent to, within a quarter mile of, or abutting facilities shown on the Bike Ped Plan. One of the key aspects to be brought up was the fact that there is an existing, he said six, I believe it's five-foot wide aged brick paver sidewalk along the property frontage. As part of the pre-application process, as part of our discussions with the applicant, we had explained to them that part of the process for improving their property, so it's not just new development, it is redevelopment, the Bike Ped Code captures, was to improve this facility to meet the code standards and code lists and code requirements as specified by the code. They initially opted to do that by creating a 12-foot wide brick paver sidewalk, which was then revised to be a 12-foot wide concrete sidewalk, went through the process of approval, stipulation, approved plans were issued to the client, as are the applicant in this case, in order to construct said sidewalk. There is a portion of our code that would allow them to request a fee-in- lieu option via waiver of requirement by demonstrating that there is already, there is a significant disproportionate cost in need versus use, there's a clear and direct violation or issue for public health or concern of welfare, or any other probable means. That process generally takes place and is required to by code prior to the issuance of the development order. So had the applicant requested any of this at any point prior to the issuance of the development order, would have been a non-issue. We could have gone through that process so they were able to demonstrate those requirements. They could have gone right to the fee-in- lieu route and not even had to deal with the construction. Just kind of background on how that works. Section B of the same Bike Ped Code also indicates the requirements for other off-site facilities, not just off-site facilities that are shown on the actual Bike Ped Master Plan. That's what captures properties in the quarter mile, additional development, Bike Ped generators, so again, shopping centers, schools, parks, things of the like. One of the reasons staff was looking to have the sidewalk improved is because it's going to generate additional Bike Ped trips that are already captured by the existing development. These portions within this building frontage, the sidewalk frontage, the areas we're looking to make the improvements on, while on the plan, don't meet the bare minimum requirements of complete street, complete streets. Again, the applicant keeps referencing a multi-use pathway, though the plan itself indicates a sidewalk. It is a multi-use sidewalk in the sense that it can hold bicycle pedestrian traffic, seeing as though the applicant didn't also want to install share rows or anything else that would have been required per the plans. So there's additional requirements that kind of stack on top of regular bicycle pedestrian improvements based upon chip generation, in terms of Bike Ped trips, trying to capture that level of service that we would want for a property that's designed to be a connection point in a multimodal hub. That's kind of reflected within your downtown corridor plans, Beatty Beach Road plans. Different overlays and cross-sections kind of require an enhanced multimodal network. So staff went through the process with the applicants, ended up approving plans where the applicant had committed to construction of said sidewalk. Applicant waited a year and a half to realize it was not going to be able to be done, and the need to be able to get a temp CC for the property to kind of move in. Community development, the city, were being generous in our application of a code that otherwise they would not have been able to apply for, opting to give them the fee-in- lieu option. They said that will work, however, we don't want to pay the amount the ad code requires, we have a different amount in mind, which would have been fine. However, the point in time to really address that and take that on would have been to construct the sidewalk. If they were able to do it for a cheaper, more economic price, well, that probably was going to be built into their contract to do that, but it appears that that was never actually taken. No plans are submitted to public works for actual design-build. Nothing happened in the sense that would have given us a design element to gauge any of that by.
May I, may I cut you off? I don't want to get too much into history here. So if I can, if I can summarize, the, the applicant today has indicated that their understanding is, and Mr. Davies can correct me if I'm wrong, their understanding is that they are required to place a off-site Bike Ped facility adjacent to their property in the right-of-way, and that that requirement is under section 3-263, based on the referenced, previously referenced and accepted 2017 Bicycle Master Plan. And the condition as it currently exists in their permit is for a 12-foot pathway, which Mr. Davies is indicating would be a multi-use pathway, but a multi-use pathway is not required by the plan for that section. The only requirement for sidewalks by the plan in that section is to retain the existing sidewalk. And if I can summarize the staff rebuttal, it is that the existing sidewalk, that a multi-use pathway is not technically required in that facility, although sidewalks can be multi-use.
Correct.
But the facility that has existed is five-foot wide and is below the minimum standard for any sidewalk within the city, and therefore, has to be brought up to at least the minimum standard. Is that correct?
Correct. Just the way, the way the code is structured is that-
Oh, gotcha. Is that, am I, am I correct in, in stating your, your position?
Close. Can I-
Yes.
I mean, I didn't want to interrupt, so go ahead, Derek.
Well, I just, that's, I want to make sure, because I want, there's, there's two possible conversations going on here. What is the requirement to be placed? And then the discussion of the fee and all that and the condition, I'd like to separate that out. The question is, what is the minimum standard to be adjacent to this property? And I'm trying to determine, is that a six-foot sidewalk? Is that a five-foot sidewalk? Is that a 12-foot sidewalk? You indicated the applicant opted for the 12-foot, but that is not the requirement. Can you?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, so the way the code is structured is that if you're within a quarter mile of an existing facility shown on the plan, the facility you are to construct should be compatible and consistent with that facility. So based upon the width of the downtown area, based upon the sidewalks that exist downtown, based upon the widths of what Beatty Beach Road improvements would be long-term per our plan, you would actually be building a sidewalk that could range, depending on cross-section width availability and design, and multimodal load, anywhere from eight to 10 to 12 feet potentially. It would just depend on, again, available building space, design specs, and again, if you're going to be in a hub area versus if you're going to be along a major roadway where you have a condenser constrained right-of-way.
I'm going to play devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
And as, based on that provision with respect to facilities that are within one-quarter mile of the plan, and on the plan that Mr. Davies presented, the exhibits do show multi-use pathways within a quarter mile. However- However, there is no multi-use pathway for the entirety of Old 41 through the downtown. So why wouldn't we just have a 12-foot pathway throughout the entire downtown corridor?
Based upon the design, oh, sorry, based upon the design constraints when they redid that corridor area, there were limited areas for improvements. So as opposed to going with a straight multi-use pathway, they offered to have sidewalks of varying widths and lengths to address those concerns based upon right-ofway constraints and buildable area.
Where, where would that, those findings be found other than in the master plan?
Again, those could be available within the documents that dictate the widths and design build for the downtown corridor, as well as the documents that would be for the Dubois Road slices and portions thereof that would be dictated in your corridor overlay standards as well. But that's a different section. That's BBR, which is a separate standard.
So your, your, your response is that you're not, you're not necessarily disagreeing with the applicant's contentions with respect to the master plan. However, there are alternative codes in the overlay for downtown that require a higher level of standards that were adopted after the master plan?
Correct. Again, the master plan is a guidance tool for some of the different areas in terms of what ideally could be built, should be built, we'd like to see. If a city-sponsored project wants to exceed those, it's more than welcome to. But again, based upon the way our bike ped code is structured, you're also held to that quarter-mile threshold in terms of what you can design, how you can design, what we're looking to have you connect into. So again, you can have a, per ADA standards, for example, you could have a bike way or a sidewalk pinched down to avoid a choke point or an obstruction. We're not going to foul you for that. But it's making sure that what you're developing is consistent with what is existing and what is proposed, based upon existing and proposed infrastructure. So not just that shown on the bike ped plan, but what exists or what's in other plans, documents and the like.
So where would that, if I was to look for today in the code?
Mm-hmm.
Where that would be the, the first place to cite to? Would it be the complete streets policy or would it be the Benita Beach overlay or would it be the downtown?
So you would start off with a regular bike ped code, which would then defer you to complete streets, which would offer you potential right-ofway widths. But again, taking that into account, it's also what complete streets requires and/or what is existing and proposed in terms of what your buildable width would be. So complete streets isn't ideally geared towards development of new roadways, construction of new roadways. We're doing redevelopment here, which is why the bike ped code gives you the opportunity to basically tie into what is in existing within a quarter-mile facility based upon those right-ofway widths. Complete streets again gives you that bare minimum barometer and a gauge, but again, depending on the category you fall into, sidewalk versus multi-use path versus the fee you're given, those fees could change in alternately. I believe actually it might have been more expensive for the fee-in-lue for them to do a sidewalk than the multi-use path fee they were provided.
So I'm looking at the section that you just cited with the, in instances where the proposed development was within one-quarter mile, I'm reading this out because I know everyone does have it.
Yeah.
Where a proposed development is within one-quarter mile of a road shown in the plan as requiring a bike ped or pedestrian facility and also is within one-quarter of an existing facility in the opposite direction on the same principal perimeter street, all connecting links will be required. That to me indicates that connections are required, but not that the standards adopted for the, the other right-ofway are adopted. There is another section that says development and redevelopment with the Benita Beach Road corridor overlay may provide for a fee-in-lue in accordance with administrative code section zero six dash eleven dash zero four, or the requirement for the facility upon approval by the city manager designee. So where, I'm not sure that I see the connection requirement extending into actually building the facility at the same standard as the adjacent facility. Could you tell me where that is?
Uh, yes. That would be.
Would that be three dash three oh two?
Uh, that would be complete streets standard requirements, and I think three dash three oh three would be your right-ofway cross-section slices.
My, while you're looking for that.
Yeah.
I'll ask if you know it off the top of your head, Mr. Gibbons, or if Ms. Smith knows it, was, were these, were these provisions completely communicated, the way communicated to the applicant and the way that they're being communicated now? I just want to make sure that this is not just a mistake of communication.
In terms of, of the question we just had?
Which standards apply, whether it's the master plan standards or other places in the code?
It was, it was done through that kind of lens of that domino falling. So a master plan to complete street standards for recommended and required improvements to the provision thereof, to matching existing facilities, to addressing bike ped network deficiencies.
While.
Does that sound correct to you? Am I, okay. Sorry, Derek, I'll keep looking for this.
While you're looking for that.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Davies, do you have anything additional to add?
I do.
Good. You're good?
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. So a couple of points, if I may. The first is that I'm, I'm still not hearing anything that requires the 12-foot path or a citation there, a citation supporting it for the subject path at issue immediately west of the property in the Old 41 right-ofway. At the risk of oversimplifying this, the way that I conceptualize it is that big sidewalk or extra-large sidewalk path, medium regular sidewalk path, the medium regular sidewalk path is there today when a development, new redevelopment, whatever new construction occurs, you've got to do certain things with respect to sidewalks, paths adjacent to your property as a condition of development. The scope of what you have to do requires you to look into the master plan. And the master plan simply doesn't say, which you've got to look, again, it's, it's a little nuanced, you've got to look at the section of the city, which, that specific roadway segment, and see what's required. The 12-foot, the extra-large path or sidewalk is not required at this segment of Old 41. The existing path that's there, whether it's five feet or six feet, if it, if it's truly five feet, I'd like to correct the record to state that it's five feet today, but it's either five feet or six feet. My recollection was six feet.
It's important.
No.
It's important whether it's five or six. You keep making statements it's five foot or six foot. A five foot is not qualified as a, as a multi-use path.
Yes, sir. I believe it's six feet. That was my testimony, but I, if, if I'm, if, if the record reflects otherwise.
I don't, I can't tell you whether I'm right or wrong, but that's.
The, the.
That is an important point.
I, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you. But irrespective of five feet or six feet, the issue before you this evening and the subject of the appeal is very narrow, and that's whether the extra-large path is required or whether the existing path is sufficient and can remain. The waiver requirement, the payment in lieu, all of that was a red herring, frankly, and was misdirection to go through that provision in your code, because that provision is predicated on the extra-large path actually being required. And my client's position is that that's not the case. Nothing further, Mr. Rooney?
Okay. If the council feels that you have enough information to make a decision, I don't, I don't know if staff has additional. My personal recommendation at this time would be to continue the meeting, because I do believe there is a possibility that there's information that, I'm looking through the stipulations on the additional, requests for additional information that weren't provided, and there are provisions in there, stipulations, that other elements beyond the master plan may apply. I'm just looking to Mr. Gibbons or, or to Ms. Gensen to tell me exactly where those references are, because it seems critical to the applicant's case that they are looking for somewhere to say, this is exactly how, what is required, and we, until we hear that, we are not going to provide a 12-foot pathway. So looking for that answer.
I just have a comment, because I, I read this appeal totally different. I wasn't looking at it from the front of you, that this was an improper requirement, all right? Which I think is what was presented to us today. The way it appeals, the, the material that was given to the council suggests that it was a dispute over the fee, all right? So I have quite a few questions about the process that went through in regard to the various steps that were taken for the development order, where there was a discussion repeatedly and in writing where there was, seemed to be agreement from the material that we got, that the applicant said, yes, we're going to put this in. So we're going to need to explore that. So I totally agree with Mr. Rooney that this should be continued, because I cannot make a decision here, given the information that's here, because it's a total different issue than what I was prepared to rule on.
And, and staff would agree with that, because we too didn't understand the full extent of, of the appeal, because we too received an application and plans where the applicant voluntarily put in a 12-foot, 12-foot sidewalk. And every subsequent development order submittal that was submitted was for a 12-foot sidewalk. Plans were issued for a 12-foot sidewalk. At no point did the developer object or want to appeal the approval for a 12-foot sidewalk. So I agree with the city attorney that it continues.
That part bothers me, so I'd like to have Derek and the staff get together so that we could clarify the material that is brought before the council and to consider the appeal. I'm not ready to do this at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
And a couple.
I'd like to ask.
Fred.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. Number one, between now and when we have the reconvening of this, somebody needs to measure the sidewalk. If it is five feet, is it legal in Benita to widen it to six by putting a strip of concrete, swatch and all that? That's one. Number two, I can't see any logic in having a 12-foot sidewalk that runs up almost to the bridge. What's the width of the sidewalk going across that bridge? You're not going to widen the bridge to put 12-foot. And if you did, it'd cost an arm and a leg and a couple more legs. So to me, six foot would be good, because that's the minimum and all that. I don't see any need for the 12, but then the other part about whether we owe a check back, I'm, I'm interested in knowing that.
Well, I want, I want to be, I want to be clear about what, one, one item that Mr. Davies did point out. If there is a condition, whether it was previously agreed to or not, that is not supported by your code, that would be an illegal condition and can be removed, even after the fact. So I'm not, the, whether they, whether they voluntarily agreed to it or not, it's not really dispositive to the issue. The issue is whether or not this is required in any way. And, and it's not, it's not clear, and I don't believe, I don't want to put words in Mr. Davies' mouth either, it's not clear that if a 12-foot is not required, that some other alternative may be required, that we don't have the information for now. So my, my recommendation, and I, and I will, I will look to the applicant too to see if they wish to, to comment on this, is because there, there, it was a disconnect in the request and the information provided, that both sides prepare a summary for, or, or if there's a possibility to have it resolved administratively before coming back to the council.
And I would agree with everyone.
Yeah.
Jesse?
I move that.
Yes, I would, I would agree that it needs to.
One second. Oh, sorry, Jesse, I'm sorry.
I would agree that we should table this so it's figured out. I also, along lines of what Fred said, I'd like to get this figured out before we get here, so we don't have all these people sitting here waiting for us to go back and forth on answers that we can't give them. I'd like to know really and truly is, you know, is it not required in the master plan at this segment of 41? Is that fact? Existing path as it is, does it work with our code? We don't know that, because we don't know the length, but if we could find that out, I'd like to know that. Additionally, as far as the process went, I would like to understand that our staff, and I'm sure you did, dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's in regards to expectation setting and precisely what has to happen for this to go forward. And then how many bites at the apple in iterations of this project, did you go through it 12 feet and now five feet is the problem? I mean, if it was six times, that seems almost like a legal tactic, and I don't like it. If it, if it was once or twice, it's a different story. So those pieces, I'd like for my own edification before we even get there, and then if it gets to the point where we have to do this again, I'd like it to be a little bit more wrapped up, tied up before we even get to this point, so we're not going through all of this with the public, so we can get to the business of the day, so.
Yeah. Because this is quasi-judicial, what I, my recommendation would be that both the staff and the applicant prepare, prepare maybe a one-page memorandum of what their position are. The staff will provide their code references, the applicant will provide their code references. That gives the opportunity for the council and their own research to review the code provisions and see if they apply. And then for both sides, come up with a, a agreed-upon timeline of when these things occurred, so that you have the information. I, I really don't want, because it's the continuation of existing hearing, discussions between the staff or the applicant and the council members, myself and the council members on this issue, we will just hold the hearing back with those additional supplemental information to give you the extra material you need to make a, a decision.
Did the, did the developer say they were going to build a 12-foot path?
Yes.
Did they say that?
They did, but they also indicated that they did so under duress.
Didn't they change their mind?
No.
Or whatever.
It matters what is required. Why?
They said they were going to build it, and now they don't want to build it?
If I may respond.
The way I'm reading it.
I mean, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Rooney, I, first of all, to try to save some time, my client has no objection to a continuance. There was never any attempt or intent to change the argument. The city has a very simple administrative appeal form. We filled in the form, and your code requires that this be heard by city council, and the city council has jurisdiction and authority over administrative actions and the appeals thereof. So that's why we're here. The appeal language included amount, it included, the, the concept generally was, candidly was worded very shortly and very generally, with the thinking being that I would present my client's position this evening.
Are you amenable to continuing this?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm trying to say. Yes, sir.
Make a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
We do already have it.
We already have a motion.
And can we make sure that the sidewalk's safe? So when we define what is required.
No doubt, we will.
Yeah, what's at issue tonight is not safety. My client wants it to be as, as safe as possible. That's, that's absolutely the case. We're not contesting or disagreeing with safety.
Yeah, no, it sounds like there's definitely.
I think we need to get all the information.
Yes.
I'll call the question.
We already have, we have a motion. We don't need to do that. Yeah, let's vote.
What is the motion?
To continue.
To continue.
It should be, the next meeting should be fine, if that's.
Okay. And who seconded it?
Laura.
Amy made it.
Amy made it, okay.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Thank you all.
I need a quail hoop. That's bad.
Oh my God, through one and I'm already going nuts.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Sorry. Consent. Motion to approve, seconded by a bunch of people.
Excuse me?
I was explaining to Amy what happened.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey? Councilwoman Corey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCumbah.
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr.
Aye.
Okay, comments on the agenda that we just passed? No comment, okay.
I do, but I don't want to.
Okay, Dr. Margaret Banyan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This time, I'd like to have introduced Dr. Margaret Banyan to give us an overview of our upcoming evaluation and appraisal review of our comprehensive plan.
Good evening, Council. I believe we have a very short PowerPoint presentation for you. And I, if somebody could help me pull that up, it'd be great. So while we're getting that pulled up, I just want to thank you for just a little bit of your time this evening, and also thank staff as well as members of the public for listening to our short presentation. Before I get started, I do want to introduce other members of our team. So I'm with Florida Gulf Coast University, the Department of Political Science and Public Administration, and Erica Macagie is here with me. She's a graduate student that will be working on this project, as well as Carmen Monroy, who is with Stan Tech. And just as a note, Carmen is also a graduate of our Masters in Public Administration program. So we have a full complement here of FGCU, so.
Who's Stan Tech?
Oh, Stan Tech, I'm sorry, is our subconsultant that they will be helping with the evaluation and review project.
It was not just you, then it's?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't think this is the right presentation.
No, yeah.
I can keep on going while we get.
Okay, yeah, keep going.
Yes, I'll keep on going. So so I just want to give it just a brief overview of what evaluation and appraisal review is. We call it an EAR, ear for short. And this is a process that's required by the state every seven years. And for the most part, what the state has, the goal of the state process is to have you look at your comprehensive plan to see if there are any changes required by state law, to also determine how effective the the comprehensive plan is in meeting the city's goals. So that's the sort of the overview. This process will not change the comprehensive plan. So I want to be clear that the phase we're in just reviews your plan. And that that review, if there are any changes, there we go. Yeah. No problem. Thank you. If there are any changes that are necessary in that review, the next part of the process would would make those changes to the comprehensive plan.
And the timetable on the changes?
Yes, I will share that, and I have about two more slides, and I'll get to that piece. Thank you. So it will be due, this this ear will be due to the Department of Economic Opportunity on April 1, 2023. And because there's a significant amount of work to be done for that review, that's why we would get started very soon here. So I want to share with you kind of the three big, I call them buckets, or three big components of the ear. The first is looking at, of course, changes in state legislation. And the state does require that if there's changes in legislation that requires you to amend your comprehensive plan, then the city must do that. So we need to review what's what's changed in the state requirements from our last ear, and that was completed in 2016. So we that's one big part of the process. And then the second will be to look at your current demographics and your current conditions. So that's going to be demographics, including permanent and seasonal population. It'll be vacant lands analysis. It'll be all of the current things that are kind of happening in the city that that may require some look at the the comprehensive plan. And then the third piece is just an overall plan review. And based on input that council provides, the public provides, other stakeholders, other state agencies provide, there may be issues that come up that the city would like to address. And so that's the big third piece of the plan, is to just do a plan review and talk with you about strategies about how to address those issues. So there's, I want to talk just briefly about our ear engagement and the EAR engagement. That sounds a little bit better. So with that, we like to engage all stakeholders for the city, and council certainly one of the big stakeholders. So we have one-on-one meetings and presentations that we'll be doing throughout the process. And then your LPA is also required to be part of the process. We'll be doing briefings with the LPA, and they will also review the findings. And then we have a big component with public engagement, we'll be we'll be doing in-person and virtual meetings. In some of those instances, they will be combined for a hybrid in-person and virtual meeting, and then we'll be doing another community survey. Now to the process timeline, so we'll get started here very soon. The bulk of the work over the summer is going to be in the preliminary research and data collection. So digging into the current conditions will be one of the big tasks in the summer. And then we'll be delivering interim project report sometime in mid to late fall. And that's just a chance to for everybody to look at the findings in the earlier part of the process. And then we'll move into some public input and public comment, and the draft EAR report will be presented to council. And then the letter that's required to go to the Department of Economic Opportunity will be delivered to the department. So just to be clear, we talked about the the review will go to council, that the big report will go to council, and we will simply send the letter only to the state, and that is what's required. All throughout the process, ongoing public engagement and outreach because that's an important component of this ear process, also noted in your comprehensive plan. And that is a very brief presentation. I want to entertain any, I promised you it would be it would be brief. I want to entertain any questions that you may have about the process or.
So we're looking at April 23?
Correct.
Complete?
Yes.
Okay.
Complete with the report and review and the one-page summary letter. The next step after that would be we'd probably approximately get a year from the state to work on any amendments. That'd be the following year.
Very good. You're familiar with the city. You worked with the city, what, seven years ago or?
I think, well, we started in 2015, so that.
Seven years.
Yes, seven years ago.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to see you're back.
Yeah, thank you. And we're happy to be back, you know, we really enjoy working with the city, so, and happy to have some some new Florida Gulf Coast University representatives here with us, so.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What do we have now?
11.
Pickleball noise. Amy?
I have a I have a green sheet that is in regard to pickleball. And I'm asking that I get concurrence from the rest of my council members to direct the staff to explore the possibility of developing some specific regulations for the development of pickleball courts, especially in residential areas. We don't have a specific regulation that addresses pickleball, and I think many people are aware that it has caused a number of issues within a residential area. So I'm just asking the council to concur that I may ask the staff to try to work on what other people are doing, whether we need regulations, whether we don't need regulations, and if we do, what they might be. And then a later time, we could, once they give us something specific, we could decide, no, let's just leave it the way it is, or let's do something about it.
Okay. Very good.
Yes, yes. Just a couple of questions on it. It says here, it became abundantly clear that the noise impacts associated with pickleball are very different from tennis, as both community development and neighborhood service departments have experienced high volumes of complaints regarding noise. Okay, so I was speaking to some folks on this, and I just wanted to verify a couple of things. It became abundantly clear that it was louder. I've heard the opposite because tennis, they're grunting in tennis, and they're not doing that in pickleball? I don't know, I'm not a tennis guy. But point being, that point was made to me, and I'm wondering if, is there anything to back up the claim that it's abundantly louder in regards to a noise study or anything along those lines? Then number two, the volume of calls that has gone up, I'd like to hear from Tony what that volume looks like from a number standpoint, and if it's all from one specific community, or if it's a widespread issue throughout the city. And then number three with Nicole, I'd like you to verify, do we have only two tennis courts in the entire city? Okay, so we only have two tennis courts. It may or may not be an issue based on call volume. And as far as, you know, I just don't, I'm not sure. We do something for regulation's sake. If we don't have a noise study, if we don't have the volume of complaints, then I don't think we move forward. If we do, if staff comes up and says, yes, we do have this and it is an issue, I'm all for it. But in general, regulation for regulation's sake is not something I'm keen on.
Yes, I agree with you, Jesse. Let's look at this and see where we're at.
Here comes Tony.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Tony Backers, Director of Neighborhood Services. In terms of volume, I mean, the vast majority of noise complaints under our ordinance are actually handled by the Sheriff's Department. So a lot of what our department has is we, you know, we receive calls and we work in conjunction with community development because there's been ongoing attempts to mitigate some of the noise as an ongoing development issue. So we do receive the calls, but we kind of facilitate with regards to that on noise ordinance with neighborhood services because of the way the ordinance is written, because it's a sheriff's department issue. But sheriff's department are not really wanting to get involved in pickleballs because it's, you know, there's probably other things they, you know, they could even not to.
Better use of time.
Yeah, I'm not trying to minimize the concern that the people have when they call, but for us, you know, we're trying to facilitate. In terms of volume and calls, from my personal perspective of what I know coming in, it has gone, I'm not going to say it succeeded, it kind of remains around about the same. One specific area within the city I know had been of interest, and we'd actually not had any calls on that specific area. So I can't really say it's increased.
Okay. Question?
Can I just?
In your direction?
I was just going to mention, my community is actually tripling its pickle call. Pickle, you know, and so there might be some people that are going to be upset.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we.
Amy, let me interrupt. Amy's correct. She wants to study this and get some information about it, and let's leave it at that. Staff has directions.
If the people agrees, but there is, let me just respond to what Jesse said. My understanding is, it's not that it's louder, it's comparable, let me see if I could give you, my only analogy is that we're having all this construction done in our high-rise building, and somebody's putting in a wood floor. From eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock at night, there is this tapping. It's not like it's excruciating tapping, but after a while, your head gives you a headache. The nature of pickleball is that it's a fast kind of sound that's sharp, and it's not it's not a, tennis balls have a soft covering, but but that's not true. So it's a it's a different kind of shot sound that is constant and repetitive, that it drives you nuts. And we and we have problems right within our own community because our pickleball courts are outside of our community, and the people that live on the other side, they say they can even go outside because it drives them out of their minds, so.
From an HOA standpoint, have you all tried to address that?
Well, yeah, we're trying, well, we're trying to, the staff is trying to help them to put mitigation things, but the the problem is, is that they have to do it by being nice to, I mean, really, there's no regulation that they could point to, they could say that you can't exceed 65 decibels. That's not the point. Even if it's 65 decibels, you have this tap, 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 tap from morning till night constantly because everybody plays it. And they don't have the ability to say, well, you have to have walls around it, and it has to have certain, you know, you can only use certain balls. There are all kinds of things that they have to kind of jawbone them into making them comply. That's where I see the problem is. But I know other communities have regulations, where they specifically address pickleball, we don't. I want them to figure it out because I certainly don't know it, but I know that it is a nuisance sound that drives people out of their minds, and if you happen to have a house that gets along the sound wave, where you used to be out on your backyard trying to enjoy your home, you can't do it anymore. That's that's the report that I've been getting.
Well, and part of the thing with my hesitation is only that we have two public tennis courts. So if the issue is within the within the community, and they aren't near people's houses, and we aren't getting complaints on them. So if the issue really and truly is within the communities, it seems more locally like a local decision. Like, and you guys have elected HOAs for a reason, and if you want to make a rule within your own HOA, that's fine, but I don't see hamstringing the whole city when we only have two. It's an issue specific for whatever your your HOA is, and then you can make any rules you want, but.
It's a development issue, it's not a HOA issue because we have to go to the city. And the city admits, we were one of the first, our community happened to be one of the first to put them in, we didn't know about all this issue. We thought, oh, yeah, we'll we'll put them in, and they're going to, they're not going to be near anybody, and how could they hurt them? So it was a surprise when all the the whole street starts sending emails to us saying, why did you let them come in? Why don't you shut them down? I mean, that's what that's what you get, you know? I mean, I don't agree with that. But that's why I think, again, the staff should do this because I don't know how to do it, but if we could help them to make the proper decision without having to, again, negotiate development orders, I think it would help us, but if they don't think they need it, then we don't have to change anything. I think they should, we should give them the opportunity to figure it out.
Well, as opposed to tennis, where you hit the ball and you spend a lot of time chasing the ball.
Right.
With the pickleball, they're going constantly.
It's like ping pong, but it's just.
It's like ping pong, yeah. It's very popular, though.
Incredible, yeah.
We'll have to, we'll have to work on this project. Staff's got a direction, I hope.
I'm in favor of staff looking into it.
Yeah.
And if you will, Jack Wang Gensen for the record. So our experience with with pickleball, and it came about with a community that wanted to add courts, and they had to go through a zoning approval process administratively, and that's where we kind of learned a lot about pickleball, and Mike will correct me if I'm wrong. But it's the pitch of the sound when the ball and then the racket or the paddle. So it's very important that you choose the right ball, you choose the right paddle because that pitch, the pitch of the sound, that is a nuisance. So in the case study that we did for one of our gated communities is, they did have a noise study, and they've used sound detonating materials along the courts, and that seems to help with the absorption of the noise nuisance. So we've had.
What did they do?
I'm sorry?
What did they use?
A noise detonating mat material.
Oh, mat material.
So, and that seems to have worked. We had a year's trial, and there weren't any complaints until after the year trial, but that seemed to work. And so moving forward, when our communities come in where they're in close proximity to residential areas, and we think there might be an issue, we kind of deploy the same requirements, but we use the noise ordinance. And so far, we have not gotten objections, so it seems to be working, but that it's really probably not the the best because of, you know.
I suppose, I suppose an individual could put a pickleball court in his own backyard and drive the neighbors nuts, huh?
Correct.
It's kind of like a basketball court. Boom, 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 boom. That drives me crazy, the basketball.
I think too, if it's the will of the council for us to bring information back, we'll also coordinate with the sheriff's office because unnecessarily, a lot of their time has been spent in communities trying to address the noise ordinance and trying to help come to compromises when there's, if there may be other standards in there that that are more helpful in deadening the noise in the development of pickleball courts, it might help lessen their need to to respond to those.
We don't have any complaints. No complaints from the YMCA.
Well, there's nobody around the YMCA.
There's no residents.
There's no homes, both.
Yeah.
We can coordinate with the sheriff's office because they would be the ones responding to the noise complaints too, and I know that they've participated in meetings regarding that.
Thanks for bringing this up, Amy.
Thank you for.
Go get somewhere.
Yeah, we'll get more information.
Yep, okay.
Hey, the next item is a second public, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance in the city of Benita Springs, Florida. in the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, updating the district boundaries for the election of city council members. In consideration of the 2020 U.S. Census data and in accordance with Section 53 of the city charter, state and federal law providing for severability conflicts of law, codification in scribblers errors and an effective date.
Motion to accept map one, please.
Second.
Any more conversation?
Which, which map was that?
1A.
1A.
Do we have to have public comment on it? Public comment?
And I-
Mayor.
Let's, let's- Okay.
No public comment?
Public comment on the redistricting, please.
1A. Yes, ma'am.
The motion is to adopt map 1A.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor Steinmeier and city council members for this opportunity to comment on the redistricting proposals. I'm Sandy Hollenhorst. I live at 27351 Hidden River Court in Bonita Springs. I speak this evening as an officer of the Board of Directors of the Bonita Bay Community Association and as a 20-year resident of Bonita Springs. As you know, our community supports Alternative 1. Although all three proposals before the council meet the legal requirements for redistricting, we have, they, they would have profoundly different effects on Bonita Bay residents. Alternative 2 and 3 would significantly reshape the council districts and the council. It is our understanding that more than 40% of Bonita Springs residents would be placed in new districts, with many of them being represented by council members they did not elect. Alternative 1 is much less disruptive. It takes a conservative approach to redistricting and preserves the current district alignment. Only a small number of voters would be separated from the council members they elected. Bonita Springs has thrived in the last decade. Our population here grew by 22% according to the census. We understand that our growth requires the council to redraw the lines for the six council districts, but that can be achieved with minor adjustments that keep most neighborhoods in the same districts. The city of Bonita Springs is working well. It works well for all residents because of you. Alternative 1 would protect the structure that has enabled us to thrive for the last decade and would position us for either even greater success in the future. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Bonita Bay, we urge you to support Alternative 1. Thank you for your consideration. And we have.
Hey, look at you.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Kathy McGrath and before I make my comments, I just want to say how wonderful it's been to see everybody. You know, this has been a strange two years and conflict, I haven't been able to make the council meetings, but not only council, but people in the audience and staff, it's just wonderful to see everybody. Anyway, I'll make it short and sweet. I am in favor of Alternative 1. I'm not, I don't want you to go off and start redistricting, that's going to hurt a lot of people. And I think when you hear comments from most people here, everyone I've spoken to so far is in favor of the Alternative 1, so please be careful how you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, sir.
Howdy. My name's Jack Aaron and I live in a colony in Castella. And Toronto Development is coming in, to develop right behind us. And they have, we've been talking about their plans, okay? And they've sat down with us after a long period of time to talk about them. Now, they have pickleball courts coming in. It's on their drawing and they also have, they had a basketball court, which they were putting on a second floor and they've taken that out. But they also have a dog park where they're going to enclose-
We're talking about the redistricting at this time.
Okay, no, I just brought up because it was, was pickleball.
Yeah, well, that's, you'll have to come back at the end.
Okay, sure.
This is the redistricting you're talking about. Thank you, all right. Hey, hey, Niall.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I don't need to pontificate because the first two speakers were more than eloquent. I'm just here to support the first and as far as redistricting goes, Alternative 1 is what I would support. Look forward to seeing all your smiling faces in the months and years to come. Thank you.
Amen. Yes, Dwight.
Hello, Mayor, council members, staff. I did do a PowerPoint, but I think all of you have seen it, so unless you want the public to see it, then I'm not going to ask to present.
We're good.
Okay. For the record, Dwight Essman, Paradise Road area, currently in District 4. Redistricting matters. It will influence the council for the next 10 years. What some people may not understand is that District 1, 3, and 5 will be elected this November, Districts 2, 4, and 6, and the mayor won't be elected until 2024. So, in any of the plans, some people will move to a district where they can't vote for anybody for two more years. In Alternative 3, there's almost 22,000 people who moved to a new district, that's 40% of the population, and 4,619 people inherit a counselor they didn't vote for. And there's about a 9% difference between the largest and smallest district. In Alternative 2A, another 20, it's the same 22,000 basically that moved to a new council district, 40% of the population, this time 4,442 people inherit a counselor they didn't vote for. And that variance deviation, according to your consultant, is about 9.5% between the two, between the largest and smallest. So, I think 1A is the best. A major goal of redistricting is to minimize the change that people experience. Only 6,704 people moved to a new council district, only about 12% of the population, less than 1/3 as many as the other plans. Only 592 move into District 2 and can't vote for anyone until 2024, that's 90% less than the other alternatives, and the deviation is only 8%. So, Alternative 1 meets all the criteria by the consultant. It has the least disruption of current districts. It has the fewest people who have someone they didn't elect to represent them. So, if you object to this alternative and think Alternative 2 or 3 or better, I hope you'll give me a chance to respond because I could go on for a lot longer, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, one more, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Oberweis. I've been a resident in Bonita Springs for the last 13 years and I'm here in support of Alternative 1. All the right comments have already been made, I'm not going to take your time, but I want you to know that there is a lot of support for number 1. Thank you.
Okay.
Fred, there's a motion, a second for option 1A.
Yeah, you call Roca, Jesse, Roca?
No, no, Debbie calls Roca.
Oh, you have a comment?
I'm sorry.
Before we voted, I just wanted to say that, you know, as I stated at the last meeting, I was open-minded about this thought process and the leadership in both Bonita Bay and Pelican Landing have been very genuine in their communication with me over the last week. There is, you know, assurances for equal access for residents and non-residents and really and truly, you know, a lot of the argument against, you know, what gerrymandering might look like was that there was not access. But, I spoke to the new incoming president from Pelican Landing for a while this afternoon and it was a really good call. And I've been working with the government affairs woman over at Bonita Bay and both have been very genuine in their thought process of wanting equal access for everybody. So, to me, a lot of my issues feel alleviated and, you know, I called Ben today and, you know, I'm, I'm still not sure we're on the same page, but, you know, this one for me was tough because my district doesn't really change. But I didn't want people to feel like they didn't have access, but then again, I knew I didn't have the votes, so I wanted to figure out what we could do to at least make it more palatable. And I want to be clear that Pelican Landing and Bonita Bay rose to the challenge in a way I didn't think, you know, I didn't anticipate. I appreciate it and with that, I'm in support of 1A. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I made the motion to accept 1. In my heart, I really don't believe it's the right one. I, I think 2 or 3 definitely fits better, but as to not upset the apple cart, I'm fine with going with 1, but I think it's been gerrymandered forever. I think we had a good opportunity to fix that, but I guess we can just leave it as is, so I will be voting for 1.
Roca.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba.
Aye.
Councilman Pardon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye. Thank you. Are you people in District 1 and 5 can come up with some candidates?
Yay.
All right.
I'd like to talk, now that we've voted, I'd like to speak with both of you because I had some comments, but that's good.
Okay.
Thank you for voting.
Okay, Cafe of Life lease.
Mayor and council, the next item is just a, we're up for a renewal on the Cafe of Life. Staff had proposed a five-year initial term, the Cafe is asking for 10 years. It's, it's council's pleasure. I will only add that if we go to the 10 years, there is, as it was done previously, there is a charter requirement that we do ordinances for, when the values reach a certain threshold. Even though it's a $0 lease, I have a hard time arguing that 10 years goes below that threshold, so it's just a choice of whether we do it tonight or we extend it out over a longer period.
Motion to approve. Second.
Well, I've got a question. In 10 years, a lot of different things can happen to the roof, equipment, all of the expenses that are involved, who's in charge, is insurance, you know, there's a lot of things that I don't understand that, you know, this was put in before I was in office.
Okay, well, Cafe Life is here-
Can we come back with some more information on-
Due to ask their own question, but I guess the question I would ask is this, is the motion for a five-year or a 10-year extension?
I say five. I, I didn't understand what you said. Would you just repeat the-
So, the, the issue is, this is, we're just up for a renewal.
Right.
The charter requires that anything of the valuation over 15,000 for a lease or disposable property requires an ordinance. So, the real, the operative question to the council is, do you want to extend for another 10-year term or do you want to extend for a five-year term? If it's a five-year term, we can approve that tonight. If the recommendations go to 10-year, which is what the Cafe of Life had previously and what they're requesting again, we would need to prepare an ordinance, so that would take another two meetings before the, the lease would be approved.
I'm making motion, making five years.
Second.
Well, I want to, let's clarify, there's a motion and-
But what did you-
I already, I already made a motion to-
But what was it to, to do?
To approve as is.
Okay.
Five or 10.
And you seconded 10.
For 10 years or?
Yes, for what, what is on the green sheet.
That's what we weren't sure, okay.
Yes.
voted to approve, seconded.
Okay, now, you're going to come back with an ordinance, right?
No, 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 we take our, no, no, no.
10 years, you have to come back with an ordinance. I do have to come-
We have to vote.
Yeah, the only, yes, the only reason it's on the agenda under my items is because it's, because there would be an ordinance, so take your vote on which path you want to go down. If, if the 10-year prevails, we'll draft the ordinance and it'll move forward for adoption.
I just have a question. When you bring forth the ordinance, you review the lease so that it contains provisions that we, you might change the provisions of the lease or it would be exactly as they did 10 years ago? That's the question.
At the moment, it is, we, unless there's some recommendation for changing any of the policies, it would be the same lease as-
So, we are satisfied with what we did 10 years ago, basically is what we're saying and we just have to decide whether we want to do 5 or 10. Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion is 10 years. Any other comment?
Yeah, I have one. I don't see why 5 isn't good enough because a lot of things change with time and something may happen on the sixth or seventh year that we don't like. I, I think leave it at 5. I don't have any problem with what they're doing. There's no reason to think it won't get renewed at 5, but-
And I, I would say to that, as Cafe of Life is in District 2 and they're quite a bit, not only the backpack per room that they do with the Sheriff's Department, not only the Christmas program that they do, not only the amount of people that they feed, not only the amount of good that they do down there is absolutely amazing. That center has made one of the worst parts of my district, one of the safest parts of the district, one of the parts in that district that gives people hope and it helps people and there's never been any issue with Cafe of Life the entire time that they've been here. So, I don't see what, we're worried now that, since they've been a good partner this entire time, that now it, we are worried about, if they do something bad, we can easily pull it. But considering they've been good partners and considering the great service they give right in the area where we need it the most, I see no reason why we wouldn't give them 10. And if there's a problem, we can always address that. But, they've been such good partners, they do so much. If we were to call Lee County Sheriff up here right now and ask them what they thought, I bet you they would tell you 10 because they understand what that part of District 2 was like and what it's like now.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you, Jesse. The only question I have is the maintenance costs and the building-
Everything will stay the same.
15, 20 years old, you know, what things that might come up.
Yeah.
It's all right, I'll hold for 10.
Can we just have Cafe for Life, why, why do they want to do 10? Is there some reason other than that they just want to have, not have to worry about it? I mean, often you want to, often you-
As a nonprofit, it's nice to have some type of clarity in where you're going to be for an extended period of time, like any business. And it's, it gives them a, a sense that they know, hey, at least we're here for the next 10 years. So now, we're focusing on raising dollars so that they can keep doing more stuff down there, you know, these projects are-
So, they can stay their program because they don't have to worry about-
Yes, exactly. They don't have to worry about, hey, we're going to have to move or we're going to have to do this. So now, that worry is completely gone and now there's more money that they can put back into the community. We're really, in the entire city, it's needed most and I, I think they've earned it.
You know your way and supporting them very well. I see they have like four vans in the building.
They have multiple partners and there's communities in the city. Bonita Bay has a community and there's others who have done a lot of work through Cafe of Life, like, and I mean, it's not just in District 2.
It must be 20 years now.
So many and there's never, I mean, literally more-
Really made a difference in them there.
It really has. And these are kids who are not getting that type of stuff and it's creating relationships at a young age with law enforcement or generally in, in areas with that type of income, that's not the case.
Mr. Mayor?
And we're making some great moves down there, so.
I think, as what Fred said, this is like a rollover, so every five years, it's just an automatic. Why not keep it 5 so that we don't have to come into any problems in year 7? I mean, it's a terrific organization.
Why would we have one?
You have-
Why would we have one?
Who would think kindergarten teachers would be teaching certain things?
That is nothing, that transgenderism in schools has nothing to do with this. Cafe of Life is a great organization-
I didn't say that.
That has done great things for the city and-
Absolutely fabulous. I love Cafe of Life.
So, why would we not give them the 10? And then if we have a problem, we can address it, but why would we assume that somebody who's been a good actor would be a problem?
Not assuming anything.
You are, right now.
Okay, that's, that's, the two of you go at it all the time. We'll switch places.
I think that's why we did already.
We have to say-
Let's call the question.
Question, yeah, vote, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, employee salary ranges.
Thank you, Mayor and council. During the workshop, we had the opportunity to present you with our proposed salary ranges. As we had recommended, we are not recommending a new study because of the unique positions that we have. We're asking you to allow our finance director to adopt the CPI, to allow him for that range. We're also going to be asking, moving forward, that during each review of the budget, we be able to adjust those ranges based on the current CPI. Additionally, we might be looking, we're looking for you this evening for some direction on whether you would entertain us bringing back a potential budget transfer to offer our staff that CPI increase as well. And also to reiterate that our minimum of any position would be $15 an hour in the new ranges.
Can we do that?
Mayor.
An increase now? Is that what you're asking for?
We're asking for direction to be able to bring back a budget transfer to you, to be able to do that. If we could bring that possibly to the next meeting, we'd be able to implement that in the beginning of May.
Motion to accept.
If the money's available.
Amy has, Amy has her hand up. I'm sorry. No, my position is, I agree with everything that has been suggested by our manager because I rely upon her to determine what she needs to keep the high quality of staff that we have within the city. Everyone reads constantly how difficult it is to maintain and to develop the staff. And this is what we do here. So I think that we should immediately agree to the changes in the pay scale and also direct staff to put that 8% in so that they have this incentive to stay here and continue to do the good work we have. I'm relying upon our manager to do this and I know she's done a very good job in developing our staff. And I mean, we should do everything we can to help her to do that. So I'm in favor of it. Absolutely. So move what she suggested.
Motion to.
She, yeah, okay, motion, she needs to make a transfer.
Correct, I would, if that's the direction, I'll be coming back to the next meeting with a budget transfer out of the operating.
That's a necessary function.
And motion also includes doing the CPI.
Yeah, we do need your adoption of the pay ranges.
Motion to do the CPI.
Second.
And to Councilman Forbes' point, the specific request is to adopt the new pay ranges and it's been added to do the CPI in addition to that.
Yes.
Yes.
We get that.
Yeah, any more? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
And Mayor, I just have a couple of quick announcements to make sure everyone is aware that April 12th at 5:30 here at City Hall will be the public workshop for the placemaking, wayfinding and gateway features. Additionally, April 13th, Wednesday, April 13th, will be the Goodwin Street Improvement Project will be presented here at 5:30 PM. April 14th is the FDOT Workshop at our rec center. The FDOT is hosting a public workshop on improvements to Old 41 of Benita Beach Road at 5:00 PM. Additionally, this evening, we would ask if you would entertain a 4:00 PM workshop so that we may present stormwater to you all. That would be 4:00 PM before the 5:30 meeting. Additionally, I do know that Representative Botana has spoken to Matt and myself, but I understand he was having some outreach to all of the council members regarding up next year's legislative financial requests. He's hoping to get from us an early start on that and for us to provide some options for him so that he may present those to the governor's office to ensure that those are items that the governor would be supporting and wouldn't be concerned about vetoing. We'd like to have an opportunity to give you some ideas of some smaller funding projects and then some larger projects, which is specifically what he's asked for you is to be thinking about a larger ask.
And the 4 o'clock is on the first meeting in next month?
May 4th, yes.
May 4th.
And you're going to talk about Terry Street drainage?
May 4th at 4 o'clock.
Stormwater throughout the city, the capital improvement budget for stormwater. Matt will be a review of the projects that are currently underway as ones under development and some recommendations.
I'm curious where this 16 million dollars is burning a hole in my pocket.
I can talk about that. I, you know, obviously that's a kind of a combined project, but we can touch on that at that workshop as well.
And don't forget, we have the film festival the night of FODA's meeting at 6 o'clock. Kathy left, but at 6:00 PM at the Prado.
Council reports. Amy, you got to report for us here.
I have several items, so I'll try to summarize. I attended the Downtown Alliance meeting where our own Nicole Perino gave a thorough and informative talk on Benita Parks and the infrastructure that we're doing that are in progress. We can be really proud, she's an example of how proud we should be of our staff. She did a masterful job and people reacted to her very positively. But each time we have staff member present in an outside venue, I feel really good that they are members of Benita Springs staff. So I just wanted to call it, a shout out to her. At that meeting, it was announced that Dr. Martin, Michael Martin, would be the keynote speaker for their meeting in this April. And it caused me to think that maybe the city might wish to recognize this, his amazing leadership at FGCU. We've used that university and our city has grown with them in their last, you know, 25 years. And he is retiring and I'm asking consensus from the council to see if I could ask the staff to provide a proclamation and acclamation and maybe we could invite them here to thank him for the work that he's done because it's not just for that university, it's the whole Southwest Florida and we in Benita have profited by it. So I'm just asking if it's okay if I ask them to make a presentation that we could give to Dr. Martin. He's doing his like swan song because he retiring, I think, at the end of the year. Is that okay with everybody?
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. Also, I attended a Horizon Council General Membership Meeting and an Executive Board meeting. At the General Membership Meeting, they focused on Lee County's effort in workforce development. And what was really interesting is that Lee County has distributed grants to various educational organizations and business development organizations. And they're working on developing micro-credentially for people who are out of work or want to move up in their work things, work force so that they can provide the kinds of services that are needed as Lee County grows. We've grown so much, you know, 20,000 in one year. And I do want to mention that we went, a number of us went to the postseason Regional Legislative Lunch where most of our Southwest Florida state legislative delegation were there. And the point was made that was striking to me that I wanted to share publicly and that is that our delegation is in a succession of leadership there. And we have Senator Pasadena, who's going to be the president. And when she retires, it's the next person, also from Southwest Florida. So this is the opportunity that I think Arlene alluded to, that they think that they're in a position to assist municipalities and cities within Lee County for projects that we normally would not ask the state to help us with because it's so hard to get anything passed through the legislature. So I hope that when we talk about some of this CIP and we start brainstorming about a project or some projects that we want to have help for, that we can be creative. And they emphasized that we should try to do this. It just means that we're going to have to talk and come to some agreement because we can't have six different projects. We have to have something that we can coalesce around. So I hope that we can come up with something. And I do want to remind residents about the Benita Springs Short Film Festival, which is scheduled for Thursday, April 14th, that Laura mentioned. It's at the Prado and it's at 6 o'clock and the gala starts, the tickets are only $10. And I have to say, I happen to be a judge for that film and we have a lot of creative people in Benita Springs. So if you do attend, I think you'll enjoy the, enjoy it and I really encourage you to support it. We've been very lucky about that. And I do want to remind, well, tell the audience that we're having our second Government Day on Friday. And this is where we invite some of our schoolchildren to come in and observe what it's like to try to run a city from this side of the dais. We had one Oak Creek Charter School, now we're going to have Benita Charter School where we'll have their civics class come. When I went to the one, the first one at Oak Creek, I was so impressed by what happened and so pleased that we have these young people that are interested in government in our city and in our country. So we can, we can feel good about that and know that there is generational progress and hope. So that was, that's my report.
Fred, get your reports, thanks.
I'm going to focus on a couple of things. Number one, I want everybody to know that this particular year, the Florida League of Cities will be celebrating at their August Annual Meeting, their 100th year of being in business. So it's going to be a much, much bigger and more spectacular meeting and I would encourage even a couple of our staff to go because I think you'll, there's all kind of seminars and workshops and all that, you would be worth going. The other thing, and I pass this around, we're not going to discuss it except one thing I found out. You've got more information there on, from the Board of Elections, signed off by Tommy Doyle, on how many registered voters were. And what was really interesting, well, I didn't look at all of them, but I would have bet my house, my ranch and what little fortune I have, that there would have been a whole lot more people registered from when the date of our census population, April the 1st, 2020, versus a presidential election in November of 20. And it really, and a lot of the districts, there was not a whole lot more people got registered from one April. And I think I got a reason for that. Benita Bay, Pelican Landing, I think District Six, we all have a lot of retired people and most of them have registered first thing when they moved in and they vote all the time, bigger turnout. But the one big thing that I got out of this, we got 10 years to get this fixed. Chris Corey said, well, you know, it doesn't, doesn't work because according to this, we got more registered voters in some districts than we got population. Census was done one April 2020, that's the date. What I found out in my talking to some of the people and I call middle management that did the census, if they called Chris Corey, Fred Forbes, on the first in August, even though the date was April 1, they haven't been able to get ahold of us. So they get ahold of you. First question they ask is, where were you living on April the 1st, 2020? And if you said, well, I was up New Jersey on the shore, whatever, most of the time, those people were not put in the population. And I think that it's, and that means that we probably really have a bigger population than what the census said. Now, I don't, this is nobody in the state's fault, nobody in the city, the county, everybody else. But we, one good thing about it, we all know different people. Jesse's got a direct wire to our congressman and also other people. I've got some, I know all of us do. We need to go to the highest up people we can and get them to make sure that when the next census is done, that the state of Florida, Lee County, Benita Springs gets a fair count because that count affects how many congressmen you get in the state, all kinds of things, money. In fact, when I was talking to Tommy Doyle about, he says, you know what? That affects my salary because I get paid by how many people live in Lee County. So it is important and I think that's a good thing that came out of that, what we call wildcard discussion. So that's it.
Hey, Jesse, you want to follow up?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'll probably get with staff at some point. I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but essentially where, the same discussion I had when the Habitat Project went and they wanted to do the fee in lieu of, you know, if we want complete streets, we want complete streets. And essentially, we're going to keep having this problem that we just had with Hovland today over and over unless we fix our own code. So I mean, you can't be mad at people for taking advantage of what we have in our own code. So if we want complete streets, I think it's important that we consider and talk about what it would look like to remove the fee in lieu of. So John Dolmier, if you're listening, let's talk tomorrow and see what that might look like. So I, you know, again, this is just kind of a forward-thinking issue. We've had this twice in the last, just this year. It's going to keep happening. You know, I understand why we initially did it, but I think now that the focus is complete streets, we need to have complete streets, so we need to take the option away. Because if not, we're going to keep getting back in this circular type of activity with these group. Every developer comes to town, is going to try to do it. If they can, then we're going to be right back here, you know, thinking they're the bad guy. When in reality, we can fix it ourselves. So I'll be getting most of that. Thanks.
Laura?
I guess Amy and I spent a lot of time together. But I'd like to also extend prayers to the people of Ukraine. Stay strong. Our hearts go out to you and God bless our governor. Governor DeSantis rocks. I just love him. So, yee-haw.
Okay, Chris, I guess you're on deck.
Well, thank you. I'd like to remember John Joyce.
Yeah, sure, he's a good guy.
John was one of the early council members after the city was incorporated on December 31st, 1999. I believe he served for seven years and was replaced in his district by John Spear. I met John after moving to Benita Bay in 2007. Worked with him extensively on some matters involving Benita Bay in 2014. John was one of the most quiet-spoken but effective leaders I've ever met. He was a wonderful person to work with. And I would request that City Council approve drafting a letter to his family thanking him for his service to Benita Springs. He was one of the people that was also heavily involved in the incorporation of the city and that perhaps the mayor could sign that letter. And we forward that on to the family, expressing our gratitude for his service.
Great idea, great idea.
I wonder if there might be an attitude to do the same thing for Larry Fitzgerald, who passed also last week. It was last week or the week before. At Fitzgerald, I'm sorry. But Fire Commissioner, I don't think he was in council. He's a Benita guy forever. You guys all know, you'd know him, we all know him. But he's somebody, you know, you know, he wasn't a council person, but I think he's a notable enough Benetian that we might want to consider that.
Hey, Mike?
I'm good.
You're good, I'm good. Anything else? Minutes? The time goes on.
Motion to approve all three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
We're.
Right after this.
In a moment, okay.
We're not done, done.
I was a church.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, public comments, come on up. You waited all night, thank goodness for you.
Aye.
Oh, they called the name? I'm sorry. Okay, no, they're calling the name.
There's no names, just come up.
Yeah.
Fight to the death.
A little confusing.
It's a fight.
Well, you tell us who you are.
I am Diane Benge and I appreciate you guys all taking the time to have a meeting so that we can discuss situations in our city. And I would like to send a big thank you to the Lee County Sheriff's Office who has been extremely helpful in helping us with our community. I live off Windsor Road and Quail's Walk. Quail's Walk is a private road, which means I can't get any police service unless it's an emergency, no traffic control or anything. On February 24th, there was 600 cars off Benita Beach Road that came down my road. My Ring video has every picture of it. There were, we have speed bumps and we can't, any speed, they just fly, they don't care. The children cannot ride their bikes when they get home from school from 3:00 to 6:00. Can't go out there. I don't understand why 500 cars came by. But they were also slowing at the speed bump and people were passing them. That is a serious, serious safety issue for our children and our family. I have lived in my house for 30 years. This is the first year that this has seriously happened. It has been increasing, but 500 people were 0.23 miles. That's exactly how long our road is.
Yes, City Attorney, City Manager, she mentioned that she can't get any law enforcement on her street?
No, traffic control, just if there's emergency or any kind of help, there's nothing else they can do.
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
Typically, what happens on a private road is that the, is the community can pay for additional detail like other communities do. We can talk with the Sheriff's Office about that, but their enforcement of doing traffic operations are on public roads.
Which there are two public roads between ours and there's so much traffic on Vanderbilt Beach Road and Benita Beach. Quail's Walk, yes, yes.
I know, it's a shortcut.
Yes, yes, well, 500 cars is just not acceptable.
I understand completely.
That is such a serious, serious issue. And I've spoken to the police department and I understand they can't come on our road and help us or anything. But at the point in the time where they said they could do a traffic control, they couldn't. There was 500 cars coming down our road and it was so congested at Vanderbilt. There was 500 cars coming down our road, and it was so congested at Vanderbilt Beach Road and Benita Beach Road, it's just ridiculous.
What was the date of this?
February 24th. I have Ring video, I'll send you all of them.
So it let us verify there was an incident?
An incident.
At Publix?
On February 22nd was the incident at Publix.
Wasn't there one then also?
There was two bomb threats at the Publix, yes.
The 22nd and?
But after the first one, which everyone had to come down our road, I understand that, it's emergency, but then they all decided, we'll just use the road. And that's unacceptable. I'm sorry, but we have children that are eight years old, on up, they can't ride their bike, they can't be out in the road, and...
Yes, ma'am.
So we have, do we have your information, your contact information, did you provide that to the clerk?
I, I filled out the paper.
Okay, so let us, as staff, we'll reach out to Captain Blake Lee and discuss it with him.
The mayor had given me his name before, and I had called, and I haven't heard back from him, but I have spoken to two other officers in the meantime with the traffic thing.
Well, the officers are going to give you their correct answer, which is...
Well, I already understand what they're answering.
But let us, Captain Lee is...
What can the city do about the situation?
Our name's gonna be...
This is a private road, so let us...
Perhaps we could put up a gate at the end of our road, being it's so small, and then the police can push the button or something like that, or I guess we'll have to put in more speed bumps.
I think the city ought to be able to do something, you're in the city.
Sir, this is a private...
No, it's private, there's nothing they can do.
It's a private road, so we can talk with...
Stop saying no, let's start to get positives, we gotta do something.
So Mayor, let, before we continue this discussion here at the dais, let us get the contact information, let us talk to community development about what traffic calming devices they might be able to help with, but also let us talk about, let us talk to Captain Lee and see what encouragement they can do there as well. I'm not, I can't make any promises, but let's make some conversation.
I understand, I just wanted to voice my opinion, and I understand that's all I'm doing.
Let us, as staff, work on it because we don't wanna set any precedent for our private roads.
Could you turn the road over to the city?
Not even wide enough for two cars.
It would have to be currently to the standards of the city's road, which requires the community to pay for those improvements before it's turned over to the city.
We have to pay for them anyway.
Correct.
We have to pay for the improvements anyway.
You do.
That's, yeah, we do, it's a private road.
All right, so...
We have to pay for all our stuff.
We're not gonna solve this here?
No, we're not, I understand, but I just wanted to...
Where we're going is expensive, for them.
I also have another issue, which I assume, I heard you're gonna do the stormwater drainage thing in a couple of weeks or whatever, the meeting, but I have a problem with the Windsor Road and its stormwater number three. Here's where all the water drains to. Can you see that? Can you see the pipes? Would you like to pass it around? The pipes are right here. This is where Vanderbilt Beach Road goes back and everything comes and drains into the Imperial River off Windsor Road. Can't even go through. It's slimy, it's green, and it's gross.
Down by Luke Street.
I'm sorry?
By Luke?
No, on Windsor, the other end, the two streets over. We're on the east-west side of Windsor Road, Benita Beach Road.
That's a private road.
Benita Beach Road, I'm sorry. I don't know if Windsor Road is a private road or not, I can't find out any information as to who maintains it or anything, there's no speed limit sign on it, so they go 100 miles an hour, which is...
It has to be ours.
Shorter than our road, but...
And Council, Council, could we just stick to public comments and we'll have our staff follow up on these recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess pretty much that's it for now.
Thank you.
I would like our council personnel to come out and meet our community, we haven't seen anyone or spoke to anyone, but I would like to have a little meeting with our develop, our neighborhood, because there's five, five entrances off Benita Beach Road, they're all coming there and they're coming around, and I, we get people from five different directions.
What is your district, ma'am?
District Three, I believe. I just recently found that out also.
District Three is low carb.
Yeah, I've been down there, I've talked to a lot of people about issues on that.
Evidently, you haven't talked to me.
Didn't know you existed, I'm sorry.
A little follow up on that, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Morrison. The reason I would like to speak to you tonight is this is the first City Council meeting since the second community meeting with Baron Collier Enterprises on the Imperial Crossing site last month. I've been a resident of Benita Springs for 27 years. When my husband and I first moved here, we lived at the Benita Springs Golf Course, which is now going to be developed by Baron Collier Enterprises into 350 dwellings. For the last 20 years, we have lived in Old Benita, and our property actually backs up to the former Bamboo Village. It is now being planned for development by Baron Collier Enterprises for 120 apartments. From the pictures they showed at the meeting on the site, they're four-story, concrete and glass, very modern-looking buildings, both north and south of the river. These two developments will add 470 cars to Old 41. I am concerned about the traffic. I am concerned about the parking. The apartment complex will have parking spaces on the interior of the buildings, according to the pictures, and the lady engineer quoted, for every 1,000 feet of commercial space, there would be three parking spaces. So if you're coming to downtown Benita to visit, there's three spaces available for you to park there, new spaces. I would also like to read to you from the city of Benita Springs website. The citizens of today's Benita Springs are in strong basic agreement with regard to several important goals for the Benita Springs of tomorrow. Their vision, green, walkable, a community with heart, a social center, a vibrant old town. This is the center of Benita Springs' historic origin, and it should be a unique mix of restaurants, retail shops and services, publicly sponsored activities and entertainment, all complemented by the ambience of the surrounding neighborhood and the Imperial River. I would also like to read to you from a newspaper article that was published November the 9th of 2021, this was the day after the first community meeting with the Baron Collier Enterprises about this property. The city told the developer that the design must include waterfront access to the public, plenty of open green space, and public spaces for community events such as live music or outdoor markets. The city also said the space cannot be mostly residential. The city also said the space cannot be mostly residential. And this is how Nick from Baron Collier Enterprises responded, same newspaper article. I think the gravitation towards green and less concrete is something we understood. Tonight kind of reaffirmed that. They want to see more green and open space, and their presentation last month was 120 Just for comparison, three years ago, the Mosaic at Oak Creek opened up on Old 41 and Dean Street, they advertised Experience, The Florida Living. Their 273 apartments look like the old Florida style that we've been talking about for 18 years, right here since, this whole time we've been talking about the revitalization of downtown Benita. It was also their developer that paid to have the Dixie Moon moved, which means that they paid attention to what the Benetians wanted to preserve the history of this area. I would like to give you an example of a success in the downtown area.
Your time is up.
Okay, the Corner Market is now the downtown coffee and wine company, that's what people want, that kind of downtown atmosphere. I guess my question to this City Council and to the developer that you chose, how do you think 120 apartments along the river is going to attract people to visit downtown? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, we're running late.
Try again. Okay.
Glad you stayed, thank you.
Okay, I didn't realize we're gonna have a discussion about, I mean, pickleball courts today, but, but the pronto development, which is coming into the colony, is a huge development, it's twice the size of any high rises that have been put in so far. If you take the rate, right through the gate off Coconut Point Road, and take the first five high rises you see there, that's the size of this job, what it's gonna look like. And you have the other big project going on down by the Hyatt, which is the, the residences going in there, now that is also a huge project. There's, that's probably the size of maybe three high rises that are around in the colony. So you probably have in these two jobs, which add up to like five high rises, six high rises that have already been done. Now, we've been talking to the developer and trying to get an idea of what he, what's on his mind, what does he wanna do? He's gonna do things different than any of the other high rises. He wants to put in a dog park, he wants to put a restaurant by the pool, he wants to do all these things that no one has ever done. So we talked to him about, if you need variance for this, variance for that, because we've been talking for about a month now. He says, no, I don't need variances for that. And somehow he thinks that he's gonna get just through this Benita Springs without a meeting for, for the planning board?
I think that was all approved already.
What's that? No, no, I'm talking about the combination, I know that's approved, okay? But what I'm saying is, the new project, if you put those two together, they're gonna go up at the same time. They wanna get approved, this pronto job, they wanna get approved and start construction in eight months. The other project is gonna be going on at the same time. Now, the only way to get the concrete trucks in there is along Coconut Point Road, concrete trucks, sheet rock trucks, and that's a one-lane road going in each direction. It's an impossibility to get all that construction equipment in, where they're both going on at the same time. It's just, it's totally impossible. When, when you do a high, I'm a construction guy, when you do a high rise like that, you need a staging area. You know, you're gonna have 20 trailers coming in there a day. They say, where's your staging area? They don't have one. And they can't park along Pelican Colony Boulevard. So where is this all gonna happen? I just don't understand it. And they feel that Benita Springs doesn't have any control over this. And I just wanna give you a heads up on this, warn you what Coconut Point Road could look like. There's, there's no shoulders on that road. Now, if you can see, when they're, they're gonna get concrete trucks in the morning, there'll be seven lined up there. That's just to go to the one project. There's gonna be seven more lined up there, going to the pronto project, there's gonna be sheet rock trailers, 60-foot trailers. I just don't know how Coconut Point Road can take it. And there's, if you, if you have a ambulance, or the fire department's gotta get in there, you could have a logjam, because if you're there, there's no place for you to go. On both sides, it's, there isn't any shoulder. There's no shoulder there. So if all those trucks get backed up, which they will, there's no way to get through there. Now, our gate, which is on Coconut Point Road, that's where we take the construction vehicles. So you can see, in our gate, in the morning when that happens, just with one high rise, one high rise, it's all backed up. We'll get eight, 10 trucks backed up. With this, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, I don't know how, I don't know how it's gonna be done. The only thing I ask you is, take a very close look at the development, it's different than anything you've seen, different. What they wanna put in there, and how they wanna approach it, they're a big company, they're a great company, but it's gonna kill that whole area. Thanks.
Yes, if there's a problem with the access in and out, you call the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, no.
You know, the Sheriff's Department could come down there, okay?
Is there, is there, is there a block in public access?
Mayor?
What?
Excuse me?
I'm having a conversation.
You're not supposed to have a conversation.
Okay, if, you know, I'll answer your question.
All right, you're on your own, my friend.
I'll answer your question. Okay, if you call the Sheriff's Department to come down there, and he has eight trailer trucks there, and five concrete trucks, there's no place for him to turn around. They can't turn around. There's no place for him to get out of there. You can send the sheriff in there, but he, he's... Okay, thanks.
Hey, Nigel, you're back.
I'm sure you'll wanna see me, so, for the record, Nigel Fulick, I've been a resident and property owner here since 2004, love our city. I did wanna comment on Councilwoman Corumba's comments about the Downtown Alliance meeting. Nicole Perino, I thought she was a professional speaker, she really did the city proud, and after a long day of working, she looked like she just jumped out of the beauty salon and just, she did us proud.
Yeah, he does though.
Mayor's comment, I'm just gonna say this now, not a challenge, I've been thinking about it for quite some time, you will have at least one candidate for District Five, I promise you, and I know that Mike Gibson's done a phenomenal job, and whoever, whether it's me or somebody else, hopefully they do as good a job as you've done, Mike. The reason I came up this evening was Canary in the Canoe Mine, I, hopefully some of you have seen the stories, we all complain about insurance companies in Florida, how they're gouging us and, you know, they're robber barons, but we have a problem that's coming, and the state legislator kind of let something slide, and it's going to be a huge problem. In the last 60 days, seven major insurance companies have gone either insolvent or bankrupt in the state of Florida. Right now, there's probably 200 or 300,000 people that are just getting their letters saying that come the end of April, they will not have homeowners insurance. So here's what the problem is right now. Companies are looking at the state of Florida, and this is a real statistic, guys, in 2021, there were 905 lawsuits filed in the entire country against insurance companies for claims, roofs, that sort of thing. 900, it's a lot of lawsuits, that includes condominium associations as well as individuals. Think a couple of you know, in the state of Florida, we had 114,000 lawsuits filed. Do you think insurance companies wanna do business in our state? We have the unfortunate reputation of being the fraud capital of the country when it comes to insurance fraud, nobody wants to do business here. They are businesses, and they're running them as such, they have a responsibility to their shareholders. So it's not like somebody's gonna jump in and want to do business in Florida. That litigation's gonna be ongoing for some time. The reason I bring this to your attention is, I know we have a lobbyist, and I think cities like Benita need to jump on and make sure that the legislature, in the new session, takes this under advisement because they're going to have to change the laws. We've only got a minute left, so I'll just, the very simple one is, if you've got a two-year-old roof and it's damaged in a hurricane or a storm, you get a new roof, if you've got insurance. If you have a 20-year-old roof and it gets damaged in the storm, get a new roof. That's the insurance company's fault for basically not, over the years, pushing harder that, you know, it's just like tires on a car or battery, you don't get a new battery or new tires if they are five or 10 years old, but they need to address this quickly, otherwise, we can see our tax revenues slip here and everywhere else, we'll see our property values go down, because you may wanna live in Florida, but you won't be able to. So, sorry for being the bearer of bad news, but hopefully it's something that Council will look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
I think we're adjourned, we're outta here. Thank you.